Hi everybody, I want to invite you to enjoy this breathwork session. And if you like it, we'd like you to join the Breath Club. That is the Patreon club where you get access to the full catalog of all of my guided breathwork sessions. There's 100 and counting pre-guided sessions with amazing music. You also get access to our monthly group session where all of us get together on a Zoom call to do group breathwork. In addition to that, all kinds of other goodies and there's all kinds of other things at the other tiers as well. Without any further ado though, enjoy this session and I hope to see you in the Breath Club. Welcome to a Language Breath Session. We're really going to dig into one of the tenants of the Language of Breath, dealing with where we put awareness during our breath. This is one of the things that differentiates the Language of Breath philosophy from perhaps many other breathwork philosophies. Please come to a seated position or a lying down position. This session is safe for everyone, but it might get a little blissful, you might get a little lightheaded. We're going to embrace the glow of spring. Come to closed eyes and scan yourself from head to toe. Really become aware of yourself. And scanning yourself from your feet to your head as you inhale. Let's take some blissful apneus, deep breath in all the way in. Hold. Focus your awareness in your head. And as you relax it out, allow that awareness to come right back down to your feet. Let it go. Focus your awareness on your feet as we hold. And then pull that awareness up as we inhale again, deep breath in all the way in. Hold. Smile. And just notice the subtle changes that happen within you as you do. And we're going to let it go with a sound. As you exhale, bring your awareness right back down to your feet. Then bring it right back up again with this next inhale, here we go. Focusing up on your head and smile, focusing on your smile as you do that, as we're holding and let it go. Allowing your focus to drift down to your feet once again. And hold. As we do this practice, on every inhale, you're going to do this, you're going to bring your awareness from your feet up to your head. And on every exhale, from your head to your toes, on the pauses, you're going to be everywhere. Deep breath in all the way in. There you go, you pull your awareness all the way up to your head, smile as we hold. And bringing your awareness down as you exhale down to your feet, let it out nice and slow. Hold. We're going to do some light super ventilation. Every inhale, awareness goes from feet to head. Every exhale, head to feet, scanning your internal awareness. Let's begin, here we go, deep breaths in. Deep breath in all the way in. Hold. And let it go with a sound, letting that awareness drift down. Hold. Just observe. There is growth. There is new life. There is a spring within us, never ending. And now with your awareness, pulling your awareness from your feet to your head on every inhale. And from your head to your feet on every exhale, let's begin again. Now, deep breath in all the way in, bring the awareness to the head. Hold, holding the awareness in the head. Letting it go. And hold, bringing your awareness to your whole self. Just being willing to invite in this amazing energy that's within you. That you share with all living things. Allowing your awareness to roam from head to toe, fingertip to fingertip. Just acknowledging this beautiful thing that we have within us. This beautiful life that we are. Deep breath in all the way in. And bringing your awareness down slowly with your slow exhale released. All the way down to your toes. Hold. Focusing your awareness in your feet. Coming back into light super ventilation once more. On every inhale, we bring the awareness slowly from our feet to our head and vice versa. Deep breath in all the way in. And let it out nice and slow, following it down with your awareness. Hold. Allowing your awareness to expand within your whole self. We're about to get into triangle breathing. We're going to do the same thing. We're going to bring the awareness from our feet to our head with every inhale, head to feet. With every exhale and every pause between, we allow our awareness to wander as you're doing now. Embracing the life that's within you. We're going to begin now. In, two, three, four, out. Two, three, four. Hold, allow your awareness to wander. In, two, three, four. Out, two, three, four. Hold, two, three, four. In, two, three, four. Out, two, three, four. Hold, two, three, four. In, two, three, four. Out, two, three, four. Hold, two, three, four. Switching it up, in, two, three, four. Five, six, out. Letting it go as you bring your awareness down. Hold, two, three, four. Five, six, in. Bringing the awareness from the feet up to the head. Four, five, six, out. Two, three, four. Five, six. Hold, expand the awareness all throughout you. Four, five, six, in. Two, three, four. Five, six, out. Two, three, four. Five, six. Hold, two, three, four. Five, six. Expanding, in, two, three, four. Five, six. Out, two, three, four. Five, six. Hold, two, three, four. Five, six. Seven, eight. In, two, three, four. Five, six. Out, two, three, four. Five, six. Hold, two, three, four. Five, six. Seven, eight. In, two, three, four. Five, six. Out, two, three, four. Five, six. Now, hold as long as you like. And breathe how you like. Allowing for a inhale, an exhale and a pause between. With every inhale, we bring awareness from our feet all the way up to our head. With every exhale, we scan awareness from our head all the way down to our feet. And every time we have a pause between, we scan ourselves everywhere. Becoming aware. In the Language of Breath, we say that awareness is the foundation of all positive change. Allow yourself to become aware. And in this session, focusing on the glow within. That beautiful mystery. That life within us. The world that wakes up in spring and the spring that is within you. Maybe you can become aware of that as well. In this practice. Scanning yourself from toe to head on every inhale. From head to toe on every exhale. Becoming aware of your whole self with every pause between. There's about 10 minutes left on this track. You can practice this awareness exercise as long as you like. Or you can just go back into normal breathing, meditate and relax. Regardless of what you do, I invite you to consider the theme of this track. The Glow of Spring. The energy and the hope that comes with the springtime. And the recognition that that same energy is within you. And the recognition that that same energy is within you.